Call this meeting to order at 7:30. Fledge allegiance? We're going to jump over that. Please. Please.
Fledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like for you to start with Randy's hand and introduce yourself tonight instead of me introducing everybody's present, please.
Charles, Randy, Steve.
I'm Dylan Colburn.
Dustin Johnson.
I'm Isaac. George Hall.
Suzanne Hubble.
Derek Jones, attorney.
Lisa Mulaney, clerk treasurer.
Thank you. See, I bring you to your art, just to get on that. Minutes from April 4, 2018, regular session.
I move to approve the minutes from April 4, 2018.
Take them. Motion in second. Any discussion? Now, in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Toast.
I abstain.
I abstain. There's one. Board one, thank you. Okay, so, 3-2-0.
I'm real, I, that's because I had the wrong ones up.
3-2-0, pass. Citizens input. Jane, Paul.
Val and Scott cannot be here in the city and we talked quite a bit and I call insurance companies and try to figure out where everything's at with insurance if we even have it to GIA or whatever. And the town does have liability coverage, but the vendors themselves, then we're at a position that we don't recommend it or if it's required that vendors show proof of insurance. We have so many vendors that are already going around to events they will have insurance. Ms. Barbie down the road that's making a little jewelry sells up to a few people, is coming in just to have a free vendor booth. I would be surprised if she will have any kind of insurance, whether it be liability or on product and merchandise. So whether, so for fun, I've got a quote on insurance for myself because I go to three or four craft shows a year, I do repurpose furniture, and it would be about $300 a year and it's based on what I sell. And truthfully, I don't sell that much because I just don't have time to do that. So, you know, if, it depends on the amount of risk that the town council feels is appropriate for the town to take. If vendors come in and they don't have proof of insurance, that puts more risk probably on the town because if something goes wrong, they may, you may get named behind. And I can't get definite answers. There is a national specialty insurance company that would sell for the vendors as a group for $175 per event. I don't know how many vendors they'll cover because they, I don't know how many tell them we would have, but the town itself cannot buy that insurance. Somebody else has to buy it, as opposed to committee, an organization, somebody else has, I don't know, it's just the rules. And that is going through Morrow Insurance and she is, that, our agent is with selective insurance, who the town also has to that company, but a different agent. So, there might be a way to work this out that everybody feels very comfortable that you're adequately protected, the town is adequately protected. We don't want to ask anyone to take more risk. We don't know if the three of us, we're just three people in a standing together, we aren't organized, we aren't sanctioned by the town, we haven't been appointed as a committee, whether that would help the three of us to be under an umbrella of the town. There are so many questions we don't have answers to that we feel like selective insurance would need to either work with Lisa, with Derek, with, if someone from the board wants to work, to figure this out before we all start going out and trying to grab vendors. There's a lot of interest from vendors, but it's so late in this year, we're really food vendors and like Ray Trump and that, he's, you know, booked up pretty heavy. We need to be booking much sooner. The idea came along, we thought it was going to be simple, which we should have known better, but if we start working right now on organizing the insurance, and I don't know if you're in the position that you would change insurance companies before next summer or how you buy your insurance, whether you review, you would review every year, but, so that whoever's going to be your carrier can sit down with the board, with Lisa, with Derek, and if you want us to continue with that, we're willing to continue with it, but we just feel like it's getting late enough in the year, it's going to be very hard to get vendors. And if they have to buy insurance for a year, which is the way it appears, it is sold to crafters, then if we're, you know, not half a year's going to be gone from they have no insurance. So, I guess our recommendation is, if you'd like for us to start right now, if someone from the board says, yeah, we're going to get, jump on this and we'll work with Lisa, run this past there, we're just thinking then we would have a much stronger presentation next year, we'd have more vendors, we'd have things better organized, and maybe hit, try to hit the Fourth Fridays, since Bourbon, they're hitting the third this year, so, so that we, again, skirt around the events that are happening this lot. You can do what, you know, what, the council can make their own decision, obviously you should, but we're not asking you to take more risk or unknowns at this point in time because I can't work with your insurance company and I can talk to other insurance companies, but you know, there's too many variables, so.
Did you find out anything different than the last time?
I sent you the email, like he said, if you, if you accept this liability, then are you going to accept it for the loan, for every event that happens in town? So.
Derek, not that it wanted to happen, you know.
Wait, is there any type of waiver that the town could?
Yeah, well, you can't, Jane, did you not tell me?
We talked about that, Ed, and that's kind of been, yeah, off the ground, but here's, the issue is, the vendors can waive liability in favor of the town, but what they can't do is, they, they, it doesn't protect them from a negligent act that they would commit where the town would say, and again, I'll use this example, but if they pounded a tent stake through a water main or something like that and they caused damage, and the town says, hey, you know, Barbie's Jewelry, you owe $7,000 to fix this. And they say, well, I'm sorry, I don't have insurance and I don't have $7,000 to fix it, so, town, you're out of luck. Now, is that a unusual, is that an unlikely scenario?
Yeah.
It is. I'm not going to say that that's a big, big concern, but it's just, it's, it's not as good as it could be.
And if it happened, it'd be a really big dollar amount. It could be hurtful to the town, it could be hurtful to, I just think to ask you to do something that you don't feel you have enough answers to go forward at this time. And if we get much later, I think it's going to be too hard to get vendors.
I talked to some people in Plymouth, just like you were talking about cheerleaders, and their school, they're covered under their insurance as an activity, and then their food vendors are required to have insurance, so.
Yeah, we have.
Not to knock it down, but I think we probably should dig deeper. Other than, I mean, I know, so we just say, okay, you got to have insurance, but it's going to knock out the load down. Okay, sorry.
Yeah, everybody, this is who we're trying to reach and give opportunity to is your little small startups that's in the community. Or, or like the school organizations and those kids, an opportunity to get out in the public, show the public, you know, be present in the public. Lions Club, have a presence there, if you sell hot dogs, that's fine, but do people even know what organizations are in the community, who's in the community, who's working in the community? And that's kind of, and then here, here's a nice way to have a social event downtown for four hours.
Because when we do the carnival down at its church when we block off the street, the church covers that.
Right.
Sure.
And the Lions Club would have their own insurance or something like that, so, all we're talking about is the mom and pops that, you know, don't do this for a living, they just do it as a hobby and that's the only.
This is, this is planned to be downtown, Jane?
Pardon?
This is planned to be downtown here?
Yeah, from the stoplight north to the library in that block on Old Michigan Street.
I mean, if, if we could get somebody to do some kind of risk assessment and then have non-disclosures for those people that can't afford insurance. Obviously, food vendors would need insurance, that's food poisoning, whatever else, but unless they're selling swords and knives and guns out there, you know, I don't see what kind of harm.
Well.
Chief Bowman, do you, do you trinkets?
Well, they were talking, I talked to a food vendor because I said, okay, so if I have a child come in and pull a piece of furniture over on top of them, if I have a big four-door aggressor, somehow, they manage, okay, I assume as the vendor, I need to be liable because my merchandise has been the, it's my merchandise that the child broke a leg on or with. So, what if I don't have insurance? I mean, are they eventually going to come back on the town and find the town that should have done their due diligence and maybe certain?
Not if that, correct me if I'm wrong, Derek, I mean, not if they have that in a non-disclosure, but that's between those two parties.
Really, the town is, the town is protected with its liability policy. It's really the biggest event that I can see is liability on the part of a vendor in favor of the town. But even if a piece of furniture falls over and kills a little two-year-old boy, fair enough. Now, you know, is the town going to get named and sued? Possibly. Okay, did the town really do anything? Hard to see that they did, but just because it's another pocket to try to collect from, and the town has insurance and they don't.
They're gonna sue them.
Yeah, they're likely to be named, but again, we have insurance to protect us and anything like that.
I, I talked to Greg Miller about this about a week ago at MCDC, and he said, you could, people can get about, for about $50 a rider on their personal homeowner's policy, they can be covered or something like that.
No.
That's what I told me.
Well, I went to my insurance agents, it's out here on the highway, and they told me for me to have a million-dollar liability in a booth for a year, and I don't sell much.
Well, that's an umbrella policy, we're talking about different things.
No, it's on my homeowner's, it's $301 and change for the year, I can't buy it for an event, I have to put it on as a rider on my policy, is what I was told.
Well, that, yeah, that, that's a, that's, that's an umbrella policy.
And I will not have insurance if the merchandise fails and causes a problem, so, that would be additional and I didn't just need to go that far, so.
This year, for some reason, this thing's off a bit.
Did you say Morrow, or Morrow could get insurance, but town couldn't buy it, if any could?
Somebody else would have to buy it, the town for some reason.
Randy.
Own that policy.
You guys out in the park is a totally different deal, right, for the festival?
Well, the, we, the festival buys their own policy, liability policy.
Now, all your vendors out there, they don't have the proof of insurance, it falls underneath that policy.
So why can't you get that same policy?
I bet it.
I wonder if that's true to be the case.
Well, and, and, are you saying that we cover the vendors themselves?
What I'm saying, do you, does a vendor have to show proof of insurance?
Oh, no. No, but we don't, we don't require it, I mean, we just have insurance to protect us if something comes back and sues us.
The parks.
Yes. The park, well, the festival itself does, but then the park is an additional name insured on that policy. So that would only be liability, whatever, I mean, it would extend to the park if, you know, somebody was to sue the park.
Is there a reason that we can't start this year with the vendors that do have insurance?
That's what I say.
And then, and then work, and then next year?
We won't know who's got insurance until, if we go out and try to get all these little people and they say, no, we don't have insurance, or are we going to say then you can't participate?
This year, yeah, this year.
So, then I think you need to find someone else that has the time to go and nitpick through the vendors, because I think you're going to find so many that don't have it that we're trying to reach. You're, you're big food vendors as well, but we've already missed most of them, they're already booked up for the year. We've only found one that really, I think, is still holding, and we're talking about three days. Then we're going to have to hold, hope that churches can, and I'm not sure if the church insurance will come downtown and go and share.
For some reason, this is getting really complicated more than I would think it should be, so.
I agree.
With what you want to do, I think, um, with Lisa and everybody else, this year we're having a card insurance, let us know, if it happens, it happens, if it doesn't, it doesn't, then not, dig into it deeper for next year, make it work.
I, I mean, Scott and Val are here, but I don't think, don't go forward this year until we roll, until we know where we're at, are we going to be covered by the town? We don't know what, no insurance people have told us what we are, because we're not anybody, we're just.
Okay, let's, let's, let's just do that. I'll work with you, but it ain't going to happen this year.
Yeah, that's what.
I had too much of, and all these people appear to have a lot going on already this year, too.
Right, we just started this a little late, I think.
We've got to get over this hurdle, so. I would say that, that, we'll work with you, let's go for 2019, and then that way we will know and you can start booking people. Is that okay?
Yeah.
I mean, I feel like that's what should be done.
But you still haven't answered her question.
As far as?
Her question is that are her, Val, and Scott covered under the town's liability policy?
Well.
You know, that's their question.
No, my question is, that needs to be answered when you get to your insurance company. They're going to be the ones to tell you what you need to do or don't need to do.
George, you know, so if we would, if someone would go to Morrow Insurance, would they give, give a surprise in, would they give somebody a price?
If we kind of had a number of vendors that we wanted to cover, I, I, that's the way I got it from her, but you know, I wasn't really buying the policy, so.
You talking to Vicki or?
Yes.
Yeah?
Okay, think about this for a minute. I mean, this, this April.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. It's, because you want to start in June, right?
July, I think, is the right date.
I don't know, that's, that's what I'm for. Town's not liable in any accidents between any two.
And you have to show proof of insurance.
Or, yeah, but I mean, I don't know, but there's some other ones I don't think.
Can you do that, Eric, like he says or not?
I mean, what's the non-disclosure, sir?
Town of Argus isn't liable between any accidents between two parties or something similar to that.
That's valid as to anybody that signs that, like a vendor, but all the participants are not going to sign it.
Right, that makes, yeah, yeah, I think.
But just get the vendors.
Yeah.
Can have the vendor sign it.
Sure.
I'd hate to see them lose that this year because I think they need to do it.
They would. I, I totally agree that if we could find a way to move forward, we should, but.
No, we're, we're just too soon, I figure.
Yeah. Regardless, the town could be held liable.
Exactly.
Something happens, just like Derek said, we're in the deep pockets, it's the town, they know the town's going to have a huge insurance, but the town will get sued if you have no.
Doesn't matter how much.
If the vendor gets sued or not, that's, who cares about them?
But also the coordinators are going to get sued, so, you know, that's what.
That's part of what she's worried about.
Yeah.
Or retirement.
Right, well, they should just cover them with their, with their homeowner's, if they have been salamander policy.
Nice. My homeowner's covering, their owners are open to that.
George, that, well, depends on when they want to do it. If I could find time, I'd be really, talk to Vicki at Morrow and see what we can come up with.
Well, I'm all for it, and I'm all for a town, I'm just worried about that's other thing. And then again, what, what makes the difference on walk on a bank trip, fall on a curb?
Right.
Or I, I walk out to them an idiot and walk out front of a car, I mean, how like this, oh, you're crossing, but we don't have any, so.
So that's the.
I'm for just have it, pray on it, hope nothing happens and go for it. What, I'm serious.
That's no different than when we have our parade or something, if someone's in the parade and they fall down and break a leg.
You know, a lot.
Vendors are different from that.
Back a few years ago, to be precise, that, we used to do the flying out, Fourth of July out at Buckeye, and we had hundreds of people come in, and the only thing we had was a waiver if we took anybody flying. All the other people was all on their own, and we always just hoped that nothing happened. We had a crash one year, and luckily, the guy decided it was his fault, not ours, which it was, but, you know, you just, you lived with it. I mean, I don't know how many hundreds of people showed up, especially on nights, Fourth of July, when we have fireworks and stuff, the place was packed. So I'm not against that either, George. But if she wants to go up and, if she wants somebody to go up and talk to Vicki at Morrow, uh.
Have it.
That's the man you.
Yeah. Can we make them a committee jury and cover them? That's an insurance question, George.
Yeah, I think you've got to go to the insurance companies to know if they handle this.
You want me to go up and talk to Vicki and see what she says, what, how many people would go?
Yeah, we need to.
Greg Miller is.
I mean, I, I gave you then the response from Greg, so, you know.
I say let them have it. And go for it. You don't want to go for it?
We, we aren't going to, not knowing where we're at on our liability. Now, that's what Scott and Val have told me, and, and I can take them to, see if they just want to go forward, but that's what I got from them, is that because this insurance thing is, we, we don't know who's covered, who's not covered, do we have to recommend that vendors have it or require that they have it? And, and if you're going to require it, then I, we really don't think that.
Okay, how about this, we, we, we find out if we can appoint you three as a committee to head it out, if you fall underneath the town's insurance, then you go for it? If not, we're going to forget about it till next year.
Right, and we don't own this idea.
We know it.
We really don't own the idea, anyone can do it, if you want to go forward and say, we're taking it tonight and going, and you've got somebody to take it, you're not going to hurt our.
I don't think we have anybody that wants to take it.
Well, I mean, there might be other people, you know, that are interested, but we don't own the idea by any means, and, and we don't, aren't possessive of it.
All due respect, I doubt if there's anybody that's going to try and steal it.
Well, you're doing a good job at it, so.
Yeah, let's.
If we can find out about insurance and make a committee and find out if you're covered underneath it, I think that would be the, the direction to go.
Well, I think that's before you start, and then you got to remember, though, if your vendors are going to be required, I think it will really restrict the number of vendors we get, especially the first year.
Okay. We just wing it this year.
I don't know that that will go.
Here's some more citizens input here real quick, if anybody else has got anything. No other? Well, I was quick.
And it's been up for a while.
Morrow, MCDC report.
I do not have a report.
Okay.
No.
Old Business Attorney report.
You're on.
Folks, first thing I'll talk about is the EMS and the fire services agreement, and I, I know we talked about it at the last meeting, and I hope maybe you've had a chance to take a look at, there's basically a one-sentence edition, there's a highlighted yellow version that's been included in there. One township has seen this, they've approved it, they've signed it, I've not heard from Green Township, I don't know where they're at with things, but they should have it.
They have it.
So it's, it's at the point, if you want to take more time to look this over, think about it, if you can, I don't know that it needs to necessarily be signed tonight, but it's up to people getting knocked out, if you are ready to sign that, for a revised or amended agreement.
Yeah.
And again, to backtrack, the reason for this was because all of the Green Township are getting out of that township, the dispatch services, and we're basically going to be billing them for the combined amount that the town gets billed.
Is there any way to keep track statistically of who gets more calls, or is that kind of there is a way?
Uh huh.
Should the percentages be based on that instead of population?
It's a combination of population and calls, it's all the formula that comes up. I'm not going to be able to explain it to you without having it in front of me. When are these meetings? The next one. Well, get to the right screen. Maybe I'm not going to tell you, this was the last meeting. I don't have it on me right now, we just had, they just had one on 411.
I have the breakdown for what they just sent me from Matt Pascal in his scribbled handwriting, but it's in my office, I'll give you a copy of it, but it just basically states that so much of, you know, if Fire had 93 calls and 1% of that is X amount of dollars or something, I know, I didn't understand it either exactly, but the bill that we just got back in January was like $10,000. I had, there was no breakdown on the bill, so, I divided it out, 80% to the police, 20% to fire, 20% to EMS, because a lot of times they get called out altogether. So, when I got the bill, it turned out that it was $9,000 to the police, which was almost like 90% of the bill, and it was only like 800 and some odd dollars for each township for firing EMS.
Now, this billing is fire EMS home?
Yes, the 1,800 that I just got.
Yes.
Yeah, but the $10,000 bill, he actually sent me a breakdown of what I should have done, so I have to go back in and fix our books, you know, but I don't think that we budgeted $9,000 for police, so.
We budgeted for communication, period.
Well, we have a dispatch, you know, so, and if next year that doubles, we're going to be in trouble.
That's what you expect, because you've got to pay 50% of your.
Yes, according to Steve Wilhelm, who went to Matt and everybody, the county right now pays 50% of our bill, so our bill is like $20,000 just for the town, and so we could end up with major dispatch fees next year because the county is saying they're probably not going to pick up that other 50%.
You know how this all stemmed, right? The county is $250,000 short of having enough money to pay for dispatch. We're paying that.
Yeah.
That's where this came out, and to add a new council, council, and to add people to cover shifts, that's where this money came from, or it's going to.
Okay. So there's your agreement. You can vote on it tonight, or you can take it down the road to the next meeting, but they will need to get approved, modified, need to do something with them one way or the other.
Nothing's going to change, you have to pay it, or, no dispatch after the 911 call.
Nothing on that can be changed, anytime soon.
No, but we already agreed to pay 2019, or 18. It's just the way she's going to bill it, that's all this is saying, this is an amendment in here.
That's just for this year, right?
Yes.
That's the way we're.
Well, this agreement is in effect until something changes, until Derek changes it or the fire or the EMS comes to us and says they want something changed, right?
It's an annual, they have to renew annually unless somebody terminates.
Yeah.
So it'll be in place.
Are there penalties, is there any penalty for termination?
No. I'll make a motion, we accept the fire and EMS agreements, amendments to the agreement.
For a second?
A second.
Any other discussion? It's almost as bad as the insurance. No, I'll signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Toast. Motion carried.
The other two items were with the manufacturing center and actually the land associated with that manufacturing center. One, there were two documents, and I think I sent them to you guys, the council via email, uh, but two that we really needed to pay attention to. One is the satisfaction of the agreement for the transfer of real property. We're not ready to sign that thing tonight, um, but I've reviewed it and it seems, uh, I'm okay with it, but it talks about the fact that the lot one three has been conveyed back to the town. That hasn't happened yet. Um, I think they're working on that. I've had communications with Jerry and their attorney, but he's going to get that beat prepared. So we can't, I'm going to tell you that I don't think we should sign that agreement. The other agreement was the First Amendment to the lease agreement, and the only thing that we're doing with the lease agreement is revising the actual property being leased. If you remember under that lease that we signed, I think back in June of last year, um, we had the entire thirty-one acres that was the subject property. Well, now it's, it's really exhibit B, which is the seventeen point two acres, and it's also called Lot Number Two. And so that's the only change in that lease agreement, and I, I think we can go ahead and take care of that one if you're so inclined. And I, I noticed in the packets, there was, there's another agreement that is basically an amendment to the real estate mortgage, and again, it's correcting the actual, uh, real estate that's going to have a mortgage, but that's nothing for us to, to sign or to have anything. Uh, we have no part in that. But it's just, I think, one less for informational purposes. This is the one that we need to consider. Well, I'd say lease agreement between the electric department and M C D C. It was in my email, so you know.
I sent it.
That's the one, just the change in the amendment we heard from that. That is amending the lease agreement between the utility, the electric utility and M C D C to reflect that the lease premises is really Lot Number Two, which is the seventeen point three. Not the old thirty-one.
Correct. This is what we got on email. This.
You got all of that stuff, actually.
We only got this on.
On, on this that we have here, what we got was the back page.
Just go to your.
Oh, from, uh.
I sent it.
From Lisa?
Yeah.
I, I sent it to you guys on the equally, unless.
Okay, the motion to do the amendment.
I move to accept the First Amendment to the lease agreement.
I'll second it. Any other discussion? Motion is second. All favor signified, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Say you're aye. And that's all I have to report. Make a motion to accept the attorney report.
Second.
Motion is second, any other discussion? All favor signified, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Board openings, plan commission, we still have two, correct?
Four.
Four on plan commission?
We need four people.
Holy please, we need four people for plan commission. Anybody interested in the clerk's office? Old business. Anybody find out about the handicap parking in front of the library? Just do it. Just paint it, do it, we paint the other ones.
Okay.
Just set it up.
Are you going to do it in parallel or?
What would you like, what would you think's best?
Well, the parallel just could give you a little bit more room there for you at the corner, so that we don't get long trucks, long vans, and they get, you know, going in there, it can always block that corner or something. So maybe if that last one was a parallel, maybe that would, I don't know, I don't know what the amount of space is. I guess whatever the town.
Figure it out.
I would probably pull out with that though, if you, would that be all right doing it that way?
What's that, I'm sorry?
Well, if you parallel, let it, pull them out, will that, if you have cars parked there, will that kind of block them or?
And they say they'll just back out?
I think they.
Right on the corner. That's the way all of our, like, Plymouth's are like that, parallel on the corner. Check in, get that done. While the snow's gone.
Last was so good.
Gosh. Any other old business? Ed, this weekend, festival.
Yes.
It's old business.
Saturday, the Tenderloin and Chicken Ship dinners, cut with fries, coleslaw and applesauce, it's eight bucks, either or, be from four to seven in the park, still selling tickets, fundraiser for the festival committee.
Okay. Any other old business?
Yeah, I know, yeah.
Can you buy tickets there when you get there?
You, you can, um, we have, um, pre-sales guaranteed, I think, until six. From six to seven, it's open season, whatever, but yes, you can, just drive through the chain and buy it. Three bucks.
In the park, huh?
In the park. Eight dollars. I got my tickets on.
Other old business, Snarken Training, I think everybody kind of got a little eye opener there, that had never been known before. Somebody jet lagged. It's all right, but, uh, I'd like to thank newspaper reporters who donated hers back to the town of Argus, Fire, EMS and Police, and all the council members that were there did the same.
So, I talked to Richie, we did the meeting last night, talked to Richie, I think they got fourteen, I believe. I mean, so now, that's, that's a great thing, and, of course, they've used Snarken here recently and they found out that some of the results of it is, uh, interesting.
Interesting.
But they really did appreciate everybody that did donate it back because it has saved them a lot of money, because now they've got other things that, uh, they need to get. So, yeah, thanks for everyone that donated their Snarken kit back to EMS, E M Ts.
Okay, anybody else or not? Anything, Lisa, old business, no? New business resolution two thousand eighteen dash five, power tracker. Have they got any questions for the power tracker? Is there a motion to accept the power tracker?
I'll make a motion to accept the power tracker. Or a resolution two thousand eighteen dash five.
Motion is second, all in favor, or any more discussion, I should say? None, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Recon Media. Suzanne.
Well, I received a proposal, but in all honesty, I can't recommend it. Costless, way too high, much more than I expected. So I think we discussed it a little bit.
Yeah.
I do think we need marketing, I think we need to look another avenues, but that particular line didn't work out. That's what I had to share, and as you know, I had a proposal, I think most of you saw it.
Yeah.
Okay. You know, any discussion on that high dollar stuff on the table, table up for a count? Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash, real quick, Recon Media, so they know what you're even talking about.
Oh, Recon Media? It's a marketing agency in Plymouth, it's run by Josh Walker, and Lisa and I met with him last Friday, we talked with him. And I also went to the school board Monday evening, and they are willing to work with us for marketing. But as I said, I couldn't, in all honesty, to me, this was just, the price was exorbitant. It was just way too much. It was forty thousand dollars, so you know what we're talking about. I cannot recommend it.
That's just for here, right? First year?
No, it would be ongoing for a while, till the project's completed, but.
Yeah, it's still ongoing.
Yes.
Well, unless it was for forty years.
Maybe that's.
Chuck, did you have something on that, marketing?
Suzanne, I sent you some information, I'll forward that to Lisa since you're meeting together.
Okay.
And that's someone in Plymouth that, I'm not sure what all this, you want out of the marketing, but we're doing it with, uh, Indiana Association of Building Officials and using our Plymouth contact to do that for us.
Okay.
And so it includes Facebook, Twitter, um, emails, advertising, um, it will include, um, our website, so. I know our list is my list now.
Okay. Ordinance two thousand eighteen dash two, transfer from Electric Cash Reserve to General Fund.
Do we still need to do this?
Yes. You don't have, I mean, this is basically a payment to the A C D C, and you don't have permission. This is just the first step in the additional appropriations, but if you take that money out of the general fund, you'll delete, you'll complete the general fund, cash reserves. So you, you know, it was always discussed that if we did the payment to the A C D C that we would take the money from the cash reserve, so this is the resolution transferring that money to the general fund, and then next meeting, because I have, um, it published, that we'll have a public hearing before the next meeting, and, um, we will then sign a, um, another resolution adopting to spend the money. Then I have to send a bunch of big work down to the D G L F for them to approve it.
Make a motion, we accept ordinance. We can do it all tonight?
I can.
Just the first meeting?
Oh, no, you can do the, all of this, it's just a resolution, so, or I, I'm sorry, it's an ordinance, sorry.
Yeah. So we'll make a motion, we pass ordinance two thousand eighteen dash two, suspend the rules, pass it on all three readings, transfer from Electric Cash Reserve to General Fund.
Second. There's a motion is second to pass ordinance two thousand eighteen dash two, suspend the rules, pass it on all three readings, any other discussion? All favor signified, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. South Street Block Party, I have the letter at home, I forgot to bring it, last two years we allowed, allowed the Block Party from between First and Second Street, on South Street, they closed the road and had their cornhole, and the whole, their neighborhood has their party.
Between West and?
West, no, that goes clear to West, I thought it was just a Second Street.
Oh.
But anyway, what it was last year, same, to allow them to do that. It's Memorial Day weekend, they've been, we've allowed it for two years now.
Make a motion, allow the South Street Block Party to have its party.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? All favor signified, saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Department head reports, so I'm going to go outside and get business. P D.
We should have a report from a month of March ago, as a partner fourteen criminal events. Um, sixty-six traffic arrests, took fifty-three code enforcement actions, so two criminal prosecutions, two accidents. And like you said, Snarken went pretty good, but you've already covered that. Other than that, that's all I have.
How's Miles' class, P D?
Oh, he doesn't do until May.
May, is that what it is?
We ordered him a computer for that, his computer doesn't have PowerPoint and stuff, so. He's actually already gotten, I think, one of the, one of the churches wants him to come in, once he gets it, for a presentation. Where he goes to school, so. Just done with it.
Any questions for Cory? I know you guys are getting a lot of flack on a lot of these ordinances, that you guys are doing your job through our.
Well, I.
So I know you're taking care of it.
It's more than, I think it's just, it was just one thing, I don't have social media, but.
Is that what you're talking about? Yeah.
Yeah, that.
But, uh, whatever. There again, as people, as people know, or should know, the police department's only doing, do what the council tells them to do by order.
That rant he gave.
So.
Res.
Definitely not personal, it's the council's rules and the police are just enforcing them, so if there's a problem, come to meetings.
Again, like I said, that wasn't even true, wasn't that?
I know.
But I also think it's important that everybody knows it's not a specific council person directing this, it's the council as a whole.
It's the council as a whole, like I said. Utilities?
Uh, you have my report, uh, been working down at the manufacturing center quite a bit. Uh, we've got the water main in, uh, the electric shit, we should be able to energize that next week, and we're working on the sewer line, um, that's a little more challenging, but, uh, yeah, we're, we're, we're working on that, might have to do some de-watering on that. Um, the other thing I wanted to bring up, Monday I have a meeting about the Colonial Estates Road, if any of you want to attend on that, uh, just talk about what we need down there for curbs, road, all, all that stuff, so we got to make some decisions on how far we want to take the engineering, so.
What is it?
I'll let you know, I don't have the time yet, but right now it's Monday, but as soon as I get that, I'll email you or shoot you a text or something.
Any other questions for Kim? Thanks. Fire Department, who have our reporter there? The only thing I have for Fire Department is made to twelve, fish fry. Everything's going well, we probably got to put a new hood on that truck we just got fixed, one of our firemen was going to call, goose flew up and took out the right window right off the side of the truck, and he thought, here goes the hood again. Any questions for Mark? Not EMS?
I was at the meeting last night, the big problem that's going to be coming up, and I'm not sure what Richie's going to do for sure, but, uh, Snarken is taken care of, but these, uh, and I don't know the correct name for it, somebody might have to help me here, these epi pins they use for people that have bee sting allergies and stuff. They are expensive, they're something like seven hundred bucks a piece or something, he can get them for, oh, five something at a discount, but they're looking, uh, there is a way that they can get Dr. Haste, is that their doctor, I think it is, they have to, or they can get vials and draw it out, but they're not sure it's going to be allowed, but they've got a real problem, I mean, we can handle people with drugs, but people that really need some help because of bee stings, other things, we, you know, can't handle that. And they've got a guy from Homeland that's going to be coming in doing inspection here pretty soon, and they'd like to get a couple of pins, you know, a pin on each truck anyhow, they got a list of stuff that they, they got to have on it. So it's something, he may come for us with, it was something we need to be helping with. To me, that's a very important thing too, because there was a lady out here in the country last year, I can't remember her name, but she got stung by a bee and there was nothing they could do. They had to call Plymouth then, you know, it, she. They had to call Plymouth and, you know, she could have passed away or whatever, right there, waiting.
So, expiration date.
Yeah, that's the, that's the bad thing, even though they're like seven hundred bucks a piece, only good for like two years. They got a real low shelf life. So, other than that, they didn't seem to have any problems. I know they've, you know, five-year plan, they're gonna be replacing some cops and stuff. The five-year plan looks like it's in line, but that's the big project, is try to get these pens on the trucks. That's about it.
Yeah, your wastewater report, water reports, any patches also? I'm making a motion to accept department reports. I'm making a motion. There's a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any other questions? All favor signatures saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Claims.
Claims four fifty-six through five oh seven. The total docket for four eighteen is five hundred eighty-six thousand seventy-three dollars and ninety-nine cents, and that is a little bit inflated, because the first two claims are for that transfer from the electric cash reserves to the general fund. So, you have to take it out and twice and put it in. Kind of confusing. So, the top two claims are both two hundred thousand. The third claim is claim for the water loan payment. That will happen again in July, and it's, it again is a little bit inflated, because you have to take it out twice and then put it back in. It's one of those. So, it's only twenty-five thousand, but it ends up being fifty thousand on paper. Payroll number seven is the fourth claim for thirty-five thousand one hundred and twenty-one dollars and twenty-five cents, and the fifth one is Oliver Ford for twenty-nine thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars. The total docket, or the total for the top five claims are five hundred and fourteen thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars and twenty-five cents, and that represents eighty-eight percent of the total docket. They may have a question on the claims.
Looking at this, payroll number seven is claim four ninety-eight, so is Oliver Ford. I have it going now. It's just a carry of numbers. Five oh five, I believe, it should be.
Five oh five for Oliver Ford?
No, for five oh. Three oh seven?
Yes. I think we are just. So, if you could change your.
Everybody get that?
Fourth claim to five oh five instead of four ninety-eight. I was juggling them because of the two hundred thousand, so I ended up doing it twice.
Not a complaint. I just want to say something. It aggravated me, that we had to pay that, for that playground mulch. We had to buy it. But I think that guy one time tried to give the town all of that mulch they had out there.
We can't use it. It has to be, it has to be certified playground mulch, believe it or not. There's a difference between regular wood mulch and playground mulch. That's why we had to buy it that way.
Really?
Yeah. Yeah, the playground mulch is certified, it's been inspected, it doesn't have any charges, doesn't have, I mean, it's all, it has to be, yeah, so that gripes me, too, believe me. Yes, it does.
What authority is that?
That's. How do we ever live through childhood?
Yeah, how did we live, Mark? That's good to see.
Well, no, it's actually, it's, I believe it's a federal regulation on playgrounds. There's even, I mean, there's regulations on playgrounds about how deep it has to be. I mean, there's all kinds.
But yeah, if you set it on walking trails, it can be anything.
Right. We sent Todd to a school to actually be a certified playground inspector.
He's the wrong guy.
Yes, around, around the walk trails, yes. Round rock trails, walk trails, and all that can be.
Do you want to do the checks at the same time, or claim separate?
Well, you can accept the claims, and I can go through and do the.
I'm making a motion, we accept claims four fifty-six through five oh seven.
Second.
There's a motion is a second to accept claims four fifty-six through five oh seven. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Outstanding checks.
Hey, as you know, we had our state word of account audit here recently, and it audited two thousand and thirteen all the way through to two thousand and seventeen, so basically five years worth, and we've been carrying some old checks from vague statement to vague statement, and they've never been cashed. So, after a certain amount of months, you can write them off as, and it can go back into the funds that they were issued out of. So, I just need you to approve through the vote to approve to void these checks, basically, and.
So, all these have been long enough that they can be voided?
Yes.
I'm making a motion to void the four outstanding checks. Second. Motion is second to void the four outstanding checks. Any other discussion? All in favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Anybody in the council have anything else?
Motion to adjourn.
There's a motion to adjourn. Is there a second?
Second.
Discussion. Thanks, everyone, for coming. All favor, signify, saying aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.